Whatever you want to call it, Jim. We'll get started here in a couple of minutes. For the record, who are we missing here tonight?
Regina.
Regina and-
Mark and- And, uh...
Uh, Byron.
Jeff is still here, isn't he?
Uh, Byron, I think Byron Moran's not here. We still don't, we still don't have a replacement for Frank, do we?
We don't have a replacement.
Right, okay.
Mark, Byron, and Regina.
Mark, Byron, and Regina are not, not here at present time. Uh, we'll go on call this- This March 12th, uh, 2020 meeting of the Georgetown and Scott County Planning Commission to order. And the first item of business would be, uh, the approval of the February invoices.
I move that the February invoices be approved as printed.
A motion to approve the invoices, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Bob. Uh, Mr. Stone? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes, alright, uh, next item of business would be the approval of the February 13th, 2020 minutes. Seen by, everybody had a chance to look those over?
Yeah. I'm making a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, we got approval of the, of the minutes. Uh, next item of business is the approval of the March agenda. No changes, are there?
I make a motion that we approve the agendas written. Second.
Motion to approve the agenda, second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Alright, that brings up, uh, items for postponement or withdrawal? None?
The two items.
Two. That are already shown being postponed, I think one item that, uh, already postponed at this point is ZMA 2019-50, the Georgetown Scott County PRTF. Which was, if anybody's here for that one, it's postponed. Uh, the other one was, uh, FSP 2020-10, that was the Hunt property, it's been postponed. And I think everything else is, uh, ready to hear tonight. We need a motion to, we don't need a motion for these, do we?
No, I guess not, no.
Alright, that brings up the consent agenda, anything eligible for consent?
I guess all items under new business are eligible.
Okay. That brings me to, uh... Does anybody want to hear, under new business, uh, FSP 2020-08?
Go one under old business first, there.
That one's not eligible.
It's not eligible, though?
Yeah, oh, you're gonna do consent.
Oh, by consent, yeah, I was gonna look.
Gotcha.
2020-08 is the Duncan property, it's a final subdivision plat to subdivide, a two and a half acre lot from apparent tract of 159 acres. It's located at 1279 Burton Pike. And that was, uh, Joe, should we, should we state further that the lot is off of, uh, what was the address?
Drake Lane.
Yeah, Drake Lane in, in, uh-
Mallard Point.
Mallard Point, wasn't it? So if anybody is here to hear that one, uh, let me know and- Is anybody opposed to us passing that by consent? I want to hear it. Do I have a motion to, uh, we'll just, we'll go on and do these one at a time then. Do I have a motion, uh, to accept this one by consent?
I move that, uh, FSP dash 2020-08, uh, be approved, uh, by consent.
Alright, motion by Mr. Mifflin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion passes. Passed by consent. Alright, that brings us to the FS, uh, FSP 2020-09, the Varellis property. It's a final subdivision plat to subdivide, uh, five acre lot from apparent tract of 47 and a half acres. Located at 256 Carrick Pike. Is anyone here to hear, uh, here tonight to hear that one? You would like to hear it?
Yes.
Couple, alright, it's three, four, alright, you hear that one? That brings us to PDP dash 2020-11, that's, this is for Jiffy Lube. A preliminary development plan for a 2,430 square foot oil change facility located at 120 Osborne Way. Does anybody here wish to hear, uh, want to hear this application? If not, I'd take a motion to accept it by consent. Let's move sailing.
Uh, I move that, uh, PDP, uh, 2020-11, uh, be approved by consent.
Alright, motion again by Mr. Mifflin, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett? Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Alright, so we've got two of them approved. That would bring us back to old business. Should be item B, ZMA dash 2020-03, 151 Vine Street. Uh, this is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing, it's, this is a zone change request for 20 acres from A1 and R1B to R2PUD. Located at 151 Vine Street, that's in, uh, Sadieville. Oh, thank you.
We done, we hadn't done the OCA, have we?
No, we haven't.
I didn't think so.
Oh, hold on.
Yeah, everyone who's signed in to speak tonight, if you can stand and raise your right hand, please.
We'll swear everybody in, that's right.
Do you swear affirm the statement you made tonight to be the truth to the best of your information and belief? Thank you all.
Um, so there's another huge request, uh, before you tonight, um, is for-
Uh, some property that's located mostly, uh, in the city of Sadieville. Um, the property is currently zoned, uh, a combination of A1, which is agricultural zoning, uh, and R1B, which is one of our single-family zoning districts. The applicant seeking a rezoning to, uh, R2PUD zoning designation, uh, R2 being our medium-density residential district. Um, the property is located at, at 151 Vine Street. Um, and is about 20 acres in size. In size, um, road access for the site would come from, uh, from Vine Street. Uh, the applicant's concept plan, uh, shows 92 dwelling units, uh, for a net density of 5.76, uh, dwelling units per acre. Uh, its aerial imagery, uh, gives you an idea of, of what the site looks like and, and sort of its location. The orientation here is, uh, north would be, uh, to the left, uh, on the screen. Uh, is it Vine Street, uh, right here, as it kind of comes, uh, under the, under the railroad, or, yeah, the railroad overpass. And then the road comes down and curves towards, uh, towards the east. Um, there's a house here on the site, that's, uh, where the address 151 comes from. But the, the lot also has frontage on Vine Street, uh, down here on, on the west end. Excuse me. Uh, this map just kind of shows us what the, the current zoning of the property is, as well as city limits. Uh, so as you can see, sort of this front- And there, there's also just sort of a- There's this little corner down here that, that's outside city limits. Uh, if, if the rezoning is approved by, uh, the city of Sadieville, we would, we would recommend that they also- Annex, sort of that remainder of the, of the lot into city limits. Um, so, uh, I wanted to make sure we- We kind of go over, uh, what, what a PUD is, a planned unit development. Our ordinance, uh, uses a diff, a slightly different name, it calls them, uh, planned development projects. Uh, and so it defines them as a complex of structures and uses planned as an integral unit or community development. And then there's certain, uh, requirements that, that they have to meet, it has to be at least five acres in size. Um, they are allowed to, uh, to depart from, from the literal, literal interpretation, uh, of our regulations. Uh, there's no requirement that they all be under a single ownership. Um, you know, the, the uses and densities have to conform unless, uh, with, with the underlying zoning district, unless the planning commission, uh, grants them approval, uh, for, for uses or densities that aren't, uh, literally permitted. Um, and, uh, yeah, I guess the, the last bullet point I have on there is that, uh, typically with, with planned unit developments, when they come in for a rezoning, uh, we, we, we hold the applicant's master, or concept plan as sort of the master plan for the development. So we ask them to, to let us know, sort of upfront, you know, what, in what ways the planning on, on departing from the literal conformance to our zoning regulations, so that, you know, not only the planning commission, but ultimately the city that, that votes yes or no to, to approve or disapprove a zone change, so that they know, basically, what, what they're getting, uh, from that, from that PUD zone change. Uh, this is, uh, this is the concept plan, uh, that, that we reviewed in, uh, sort of, which was submitted as part of this project. So this for orientation, uh, the north is to the top of the screen, this is Vine Street here, uh, sort of as it fronts along, uh, the applicant's property and, and some of the properties in the area. The applicant is proposing, uh, this hatched area as, uh, as proposed right-of-way for the site, so- You know, roads that they would construct, they would see, uh, being located in those areas, and this would be the entrance to their site. Uh, they've got, uh, a series of single-family lots, you know, as you can kind of see, uh, platted out, or not platted, but proposed to be platted out, uh, in these areas sort of on the north and the eastern side of the site. And then they've got some, some multifamily developments, so apartments, uh, on the south side of the site. Um, some of these remaining open areas, uh, that are sort of the, like the yellowish color or the light orange, um, those are areas that they're, they're proposing as, as open space slash future development. Um, and I'll, I'll- Um, I guess one, I guess another, another sort of, sort of back, bit of background information on the site. Um, it's a little bit hard to see here, but, you know, this, uh, is from our online floodplain maps, but it also kind of shows, uh, topography- And drainage for the site. Uh, there is, uh, a drainage line- And that sort of runs along the eastern- Side of the property here, you can see it with the- The blue color, and then there's the, the more major, uh- Drainage way that, uh, runs here along the western side of the site, crosses under, underneath Vine Street there, on the- Western side of- Uh, the western end of Vine Street. Uh, so, we, I do have some concerns with the, uh, with the concept plan. Uh, on, on here, I identify, you know, the, the areas that they're labeling as future development slash access. As I mentioned before, we would typically, on a, a master plan or a concept plan for a PUD zone change, we would look for these areas to be, I guess, more defined, if it's going to be future development. We would like to see what those developments, you know, could or, or would be, what the- What the applicant's current vision for those areas are, if they're planned to be open space, you know, let's just call them open space. If, you know, a circumstance was to arise later, um, and, and they saw a need to change, you know, this or, or any other element of their master plan, there is a mechanism that they could come back and, and request that change before the, the planning commission in future. Um, so really with, as far as those areas, really, we would just like to see, uh, some, some clarity as far as what those areas are going to be. Um, we would also like, as I mentioned before, uh, we would like to see the, the drainage areas, uh, shown accurately on, on the concept plan. Um, and then we also have some concerns regarding the access that I'll, that I'll touch on here in a second. Um, as far as the layout, um, lots, uh, one through six, uh, here, the, the northernmost, those are, are proposed to be, um, I guess the most, the most in conformance with, with our typical, uh, R2 zoning, uh, as far as single-family lots. Uh, they pretty closely match, um, our minimum lot size requirement for the R2 district, which is 6,000, uh, square feet. Um, lots seven through 19, so along the, the eastern side of the property here, these lots, uh, that they're showing, those are, uh, a step down in size, um, you know, with an average lot size of, of almost 4,500 square feet. And then, uh, these, these lots that they're proposing in, in the central area, lots 23 through 46, um, are proposed to be, to be very small lots, but the applicant does have sort of a, a unique, uh, or at least a unique to, to Scott County idea of, of how they want to use those lots. Um, and I'll, I'll talk about that here in a second. Um, in general, I- I'm in support of the applicant's request to reduce the setbacks on these lots, that's not, uh, an uncommon thing. Planned unit development zone changes to have the applicant- Request, uh, reduce setbacks for single-family lots. Um, I, I looked over their requests, it's, they're, they're pretty reasonable and, and then, you know, I guess they're, they're very comparable to other, uh, rezoning requests we've had for, for single-family developments. Uh, as far as those central areas, this is, uh, an image, uh, that I, that I took from a book called Pocket Neighborhoods by Ross Chapin. Um, but this kind of gives you an idea- A little bit of an idea of sort of what the applicant is thinking for those- Uh, for those central areas, areas of single-family lots, so, you know, an area like this would- Likely end up looking something like this. Uh, what they want to do is have, uh, the garages sort of face outwards the street. And the, the fronts of the homes would face sort of a central courtyard, so, as you can see in this example, there's a, there's a street that runs, uh, around the outside, and then the homes basically front on the- The central courtyard, where, you know, they might end up being, it might end up being privately owned, but, you know, it becomes sort of a, a shared common space between those lots. Um, the, the multifamily area, um, the applicant is, is proposing about 49 dwelling units in those areas. Um, they split up amongst two, uh, two lots, and they kind of arrange the, the proposed buildings conceptually around the outside. Um, I don't really have any problems, uh, with the proposed multifamily area. Um, the only thing I would mention with, with regards to that is that, uh, you know, when they move to the development plan stage of this application, uh, that they just make sure that there's adequate spacing between the buildings. And there are a couple of areas, I think, uh, here in particular, that's spacing between, uh, these buildings, labeled as about 10 feet. Uh, the, the R regs require, uh, 15 feet- Between multifamily buildings, and that's mostly just for the, the safety of firefighters and other emergency responders. Um, I mentioned before, I was gonna talk a little bit about, uh, access to the site. Um, this is probably, uh, staff's biggest concern with, with the application. Um, Vine Street, uh, as, as we talked about at workshop some, is, is a very narrow road. Um, it's about 12 feet in width at, at various points. Uh, you can see here, uh, this is, um, looking southward on, on Vine Street, um, just before that, that corner where, where it turns to the east. Um, so the, the access point that the applicant's looking at is probably roughly somewhere here in this area, but, you know, you can tell, this is definitely one of those areas, if it's not here, it's definitely narrows down up here to about 12 feet. Um, and our concern there would mostly be that, um, you know, emergency vehicles, fire trucks, school buses, trash trucks, would have a very difficult time navigating, uh, such a narrow road, if that's the only way in and out of this, uh, development that's proposing at this time about 100, uh, new homes. So, we would, we have some concerns that, that at present, uh, the, the road isn't adequate to, to safely, uh, provide access to the site. Should there be some, some road improvements or, or commitments, uh, that may be something that you all have to take into consideration, uh, as far as making your recommendation to Sadieville City Commission. Uh, at the very least, when, when the application moves to, um, you know, preliminary subdivision plat- At the very least, when, when the application moves to, you know, preliminary subdivision plat or preliminary development. Plan stage, you know, should the zone change be approved, staff would look for any applica-, any subsequent application to have a traffic impact study accompany it so that, you know, staff and, and you all can adequately look at, what, what type of traffic would be generated by the site, what its impact would be on, on the transportation network in and around the area and what types of offsite or onsite changes might need to be made to service the traffic generated by the site. This, I included this just as sort of a, a thought. It's obviously not something that we would necessarily require the applicant to do. But I did want to just indicate on, on the concept plan currently, it, it shows the, the drainage line up here sort of on the northern end of the property coming down the, the east, the western side rather. The, the drainage actually kind of follows this green line. It doesn't make a huge impact as far as whether or not the site. Is usable or suitable for. Development, it, it's more just a matter. You know, having, having an accurate plan for us to make. A, a decision on. I also, I guess, was somewhat wondering if it might make more sense instead of bringing this. The entrance to the site up. On the northern side. If maybe in future the applicant or their consultants might look at possibly teeing this intersection if that might be feasible. It might just make. For a cleaner entrance to the site. And safer transportation network. The applicant, I guess while we're talking about access, the applicant is indicating that they might in the future want. Access. To Davis Lane, so they have sort of left this area open and labeled it as a potential future connection. I don't really have any problem with that. The only, the only potential issue would be, once again, the width of Vine Street currently is, it's, it's just not very wide. Even the part that goes up to. On-street parking available, which, which really kind of cuts it down to about 10. This part I'm sure you're all. Pretty familiar with at this point. But state law requires that, that we make certain findings if we're, if we're going to approve zone changes. So there's three, I guess, sort of tests that you, that you look at. The first one being, you know, is the plan in agreement with the, the most recent, the most recently adopted comprehensive plan? If you don't find that, then you would look at whether or not there's been. Changes or, sorry, after that you would look. At whether or not the existing zoning classification system is inappropriate. And. And if you don't find that, that. Then you would look at if there've been changes of economic, physical. Or social nature in the area. That were not anticipated by the comp plan. So when I look at the, the future land use map, which is part of our most recently. Adopted comp plan, basically everything in this orange color that you see here is, is an urban residential future land use. So I, I, I do find that their proposed use. Is in compliance with the future land use map. Furthermore, I find. Meets several goals and objectives that are listed in the comprehensive plan. So in general, I don't, I don't necessarily have any issues as far as the applicant's requested zoning. The issues that I, that I potentially, or that I sort of had with the application is more along the lines of that the application is a PUD and so we would look for the concept plan to be a little bit more firm in terms of, of what, what we're, what we're, or you know, the city of Sadieville going to get from this application. So if, if the applicant could, you know, maybe make some commitments as far as. What those. Future development or open space areas. Are going to be. Probably feel a little bit better about the application. Also, our other issue is, is with Vine Street in general, you know, we sort of, we find that the, the infrastructure that exists today isn't sufficient to support, you know, an additional 100 homes in that area. I'm sure the applicant will have some comments related to that, but that's, that's, that's the, the opinion that staff has. As of today, the infrastructure just isn't. Isn't sufficient. So my recommendation right now would be that we, that we postpone the application, give the applicant some time to, to work on that concept plan and address some of those, they're, they're really not major concerns, but there's some of those small concerns. And bring the application. Back next month so we can all, I guess. Have a better, firmer understanding of what this development will look like if it's approved. It may also give the applicant some time to come up with firm plans as far as how to address or how they might address the concerns we have with Vine Street and that way, you know, possibly relieve yours or. Cities' concerns. That infrastructure is. There to support the, the project at this time. If you all do recommend. Approval of this application, I do have several conditions of approval. They're not conditioned conditions like we might see on a development plan. Many of them are simply reminders that, you know, any applications in future will need to meet, you know, local regulations and things of that nature. But there, there are six of them and, and they are, they are in your staff. And that's all that I had.
Do I have questions for Matt, Commissors? On right now? Thank you, Matt. Is the applicant present or someone for that wish to speak?
Thank you. I generally agree with the recommendations for if the zoning is, and we've discussed some of them, the Sadieville and also with your, with your planning folks. The dilemma that I have is that a lot of this, a lot of the concerns are ones that would be brought forward in the development plan, not in the zoning request. I need the zoning request to be able to continue to, to go forward.
For instance, to multifamily, one of them is for veterans and seniors. I have to get special financing for that. The very first question is the property is owned properly. And no, it's not, so the application is dead until that happens. The second is for.
Single parent families. Those are the two multifamily things that we're looking to put in there. The piece of property that's.
In between those two multifamily is definitely left open for two reasons. One, you may need a daycare and you may need a senior care. Well, if we don't get the financing for the others, then we don't need the daycare or we don't need the senior care. So I can. Very much say. We're looking to the future here. And, and. If you, if you're. If your multifamily is filled up, you know, here in Scott County, there's, there's a demand for senior housing. Beyond any capacity you can have and beyond what we're proposing to do right now. You know, you go over to the housing people and they say, we're looking for senior housing, senior housing. Not, not nursing homes, but for seniors. I'm a veteran and I see a lot of homeless veterans out there. And there are.
Certificates.
For veterans in Scott County.
That can't be filled. And Veterans Administration says, you've got 10 certificates that you're not using and we'll give you another 10.
We'll give you another 20 if you have housing for them. Wouldn't it be terrible if we had to build another complex of senior housing or veterans housing out there? I would be more than happy to phase in the development plan. I'd love to have the traffic survey and if they say, hey, more than 20 houses will be too many, then we'll just make the development, the first phase for 20 houses or 18 houses. Or if we get the, the veterans housing back there, we won't build the houses initially. We don't want to overload the thing and, and if you look at the map there, the reason we came in higher was because that's where the road's wider. We're willing to work with the city, we've talked to the city, we'll give them frontage there if they want, if they can come up with a way to widen Vine Street. We'd love to have that happen. And the alternate one up there in your top right corner up there, we left that wide open. They're getting, they're trying to, to get some things together to where they can open that up up there. And we've just backed off of it. In our very first plan, we asked to come in up in that corner up there. And.
And the highway departments or the.
The county road.
Departments said, no, you can't come in up there, so we backed off of there. We're trying to be very cooperative, we're trying to meet.
The needs of the community.
And, and I would ask, no problem with the, with the contingencies for, for the zoning change. I'd ask you to give us a zoning change so we can go forward. Thanks very much.
If you would, if you would, just state your name for the record, that way the, just, just. I say if you would, just state your name for the record on the, as far as the applicant.
Still, S-D-U-L-L. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm trying to think who I need to hear from next to be the. From the audience, is it, or do we need to go back?
Charlie, can I speak on behalf of the city?
This is the Lord High Mayor.
Yeah.
I don't see you've signed in though.
I'm not, I'm not.
Do you swear affirm what you're about to say to be the truth, best information and belief?
I do. My name's Rob Wagner and I'm here on behalf.
Of Mr.
And as you all are aware, we've got a lot of things happening in Sadieville right now. A lot of positive, that is for the, not just the Sadieville community, but for the community.
Yes, as always Georgetown.
We are right now running into a situation where we have a housing dilemma, not only in Sadieville, but in Georgetown and in Scott County. And Mr. Stone came across with this concept and I think it.
It's too built.
It not only brings good affordable housing to the community, but it, it targets a special group of folks who maybe somewhere along the line have been dropped through the, the cracks with the veterans, the people who are single parent with a family who need a, a more affordable way for, to live, a more affordable place to live. I will share this statistic with you and I just want to say that in this process, on Main Street this past year, this, in the past five months, we've sold three houses. This past five months and then as Mr. Stone, who's been a roacher, can, can attest to, the property value.
Is in, in Sadieville was somewhat stagnant because of the area it was.
Well, this past five months, we've sold three homes, one's bought 159, one's bought 135, one's bought 130,000. Now you still can't, sometimes I still have a reach for certain people, but it still allows people, and the people who have moved into them have used the reasoning, to me, it is affordable housing. We can come there with our families, come into a small community, you know, they can let their kids run down the streets and ride their bikes and things of that way, of that nature, and that's the thing we want to do. And, and the situation with Vine Street, and I talked with Matt and with Joe about this at great extent, we need to address that, we definitely have an issue there. And so we are ready to move forward and dedicate $100,000 to doing something with Vine Street. We have an easement at the back of those houses on the south side, we have an alleyway through there, Davis Alley. We want to open that all the way through, we have a, we have a right-of-way through there. And that's one of the things we want to look at. We want to take out the sidewalks and we want to move that, the property numbers to the south, about six feet, open up that street more. We have an issue, fire trucks right now getting up through there on the east end of that street. Where Mr. Stone is looking at entrances, I don't see a big depression or anything causing a big, a big issue at that currently. And hopefully by the time he gets ready to open that up for sale, we can have the wide road, or the road widened normally in by the railroad underpass and going around the curb. Yeah, we've gotten, this has come to us, this concept's new for everyone. And so it's going to kind of be, and Joe and, and Matt have agreed to work with me on, on making this a model plan. And people are looking at that. I mean, they're finding out we're doing this and we're getting people to say, we would like to come to Sadieville once you get this started and look at this plan. And we have an opportunity to kind of be on the cutting edge. And I, as I was sharing earlier with some of the folks, it's a shot in the arm in Sadieville, you know what I'm saying? And some of you may not be aware of this, some of you may, I've got a road plan that's set in Frankfurt right now worth $24 million that's got funded in the budget for our interstate change. So there's a lot of things that's going to happen down there. And I, I've talked with, with these two gentlemen about updating our comprehensive plan this next year. So we've got a lot of things on the board, we've got a lot of things to do. And this is one step I think that's going to help us move forward, to make people see that we're interested in making a difference in not only Sadieville, but the whole outcome for Scott County.
Any questions for Mr. Wagner? Just, it sounds like.
Robbie.
Yes.
Talk about Vine Street being narrow and so on, what about the railroad bridge? Is there any way to widen that?
Well, it's an interesting, it's an interesting, interesting impasse that you bring that up and I was sharing with, I think Matt, just today.
We've talked about this several times, we have an issue with that. But the problem is, you know, I've, I've been willing, when I was mayor there for 10 years before, and then when I was asked to come back this time and run this for a third term.
The Senator, we talked about that.
The city has no control over that, the railroad bridge, the railroad people were not willing to work with us. However, I guess.
The feather in our cap, we've met a gentleman by the name of Charles Tyson, who is a railroad engineer, who, he, he's, he's agreed to study that. Now we just had two incidences that occurred there, two truck or trailers and, and the traffic for truck or trailers has increased 100 fold on that road, on Pike Street. So what has occurred there, they hit the railroad bridge twice in, in one week, just this past week. And those railroad people came down and started looking at that and they said, you realize this costs us a half a million dollars every time this occurs? Well, that's not my problem, it's not my railroad bridge, okay? So we did, we finally got down this past week to set out and get a dialogue with them as to creating a roundabout, another entrance to go out of Sadieville and one to come into Sadieville wide or something to create an issue, another entrance somewhere that creates that problem, because it, it can be a problem.
So.
I, I don't know, I don't, believe me, I'm addressing it and I'm on the phone every day relentlessly with anybody in the wilderness. So that's where we are.
Any other questions?
It appears that if either corner of the bridge were to be taken out, that just opens up Sadieville. I mean, you can see all over the town, if that bridge was just a corner of it, either side was taken out.
It's just straightened out.
Right.
It's got to be straightened out. It, it's not a problem for just normal traffic, the cars, but when you start putting eighteen wheelers on it and, and it, it becomes an issue. If you go out 32 past Sadieville, from Sadieville to Scott County, it's atrocious. I'm just waiting for somebody to say, well, a, a school bus has gone off this, and we've asked for guardrails, we've asked for guardrails and guardrails, nobody's got it. That's a state road.
Any other questions?
What about Davis, if I'm not opening Davis Lane, that comes our driveway.
Right.
So I'm, I've got a big concern.
That helps, that helps with all street park? And, and that's part of.
If you can, if you can, if you're making, if you want to make a statement, come up to the lecture. I'll just let, all right.
You got, you got Vine Street and you got Davis Lane. You come up Davis Lane, it goes right into our driveway.
He's talking about opening it up and that's going to be.
We need you to come up and state your name for the record.
For the record, they, they, they have to keep this in the minutes, anybody that has comments.
James Blake, I live at 119 Davis Lane.
Oh, you didn't take the oath earlier, do you swear affirm what you're about to say to be the truth, the best your information and belief? Hey, you're naming it James Lane?
Blake.
Blake.
We were actually on the, the, the thing there, so.
Got you.
Yeah, we've got a big problem with Davis Lane being opened up because Davis becomes our driveway. So what's going to be done with that?
I, I haven't, not only have any comment on that, I'd say that's more with your city commission and the.
Exactly. I want to know what's going to happen to our house.
And our driveway. So I'd like. Something answered about that.
We've lived there for 11 years and we've heard that, you know, we can own your property for Kentucky for seven years longer than that's your property.
There's, there's probably a right-of-way through there, isn't there?
There is a right-of-way, there's a right-of-way that goes.
All through all those black, those houses to the back of them, clear down past.
That's Vine Street, I'm talking about Davis Lane.
No, I'm talking about.
Davis Lane, there's, there is a right-of-way all down through behind all of those houses on the south side of the street. Matt, do we have that on the map someplace where he's talking about?
Our driveway, right in the curve.
You know, all we're going to do is curve it, and your driveway and go behind those houses.
That's, that's ours then, so, that is our farm gate. Yeah, that's, that's our.
That goes to our.
Our farm, we got a gate back there. We have farm and, we have horses, and that's how we get it out.
That's how we get it out.
Yeah, your access is there, is the way people live there.
Yeah.
We've lived there too.
If you're going, if you're going to make a statement, please come up, and we'll try to speak one at a time here, and otherwise, our.
David Everly, I swear whatever I swear to.
You say Everly?
Everly, E-V-E-R-L-Y.
Go ahead.
Where are you located, Mr. Everly, on that map there?
Well, actually, the gentleman right here pointed out all this area that's going to be rezoned, when he took his little marker, he had marked through our land. You see the, the blue part there? Right to the, to the right of that is our, is our farm.
Okay.
Right down from where, uh, it backs up to, uh, James's area and Nancy's area.
Okay.
This area is one twenty-one.
Yeah, one twenty-one is us. Yeah.
Thank you. So, I, I just, now.
Can I go through your ground?
So, what, I didn't understand what, what your point was. I just asked you.
What are they going to destroy, our access?
Yes.
Are they going to take our, part of our farm?
Oh, I'm sure you'd have, you'd have to.
So, they can build a subdivision? Any answers there, Stulls?
No, no.
No, we're not. We're not. You don't even know the answer, do you, Mr. Stull?
No, I have the option on the land.
Oh. Well, is he the applicant, or is Nancy the applicant?
She's the applicant, and I'm her agent at this time.
My name's Greg. I put my one seventy Roberts Lane on the eighty acres that backs up to that farm. Actually, we can see. I can see from my house about that.
Do you swear or affirm?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I just want, I just, the Davis Lane. We could show you a picture on there and show how, you know, Davis, you take it behind those houses, and it goes straight to a gate that goes straight into our property. And it's narrow, too. And then the Vine Street problem, you can't really get a truck with a ten-foot trailer through there, half the time, there's vehicles everywhere, so I don't know how you're going to put.
That's not going to be a good access.
Ten houses, twenty houses, ninety, I don't know how you're going to pull that off.
Well, we're going in down, uh, beginning of Vine Street, we're not going in there.
Well, you just said that you were going to make the area there.
We said if they, if they open that up, he said that they were going to, the city was going to do some work on Davis Lane.
If you go, once again, if you're going to speak, please, please speak at the microphone, and we'll try to keep this.
Well, then, another question about the drainage line you have on the property, you know, that's like a rickety fence row, uh, trees, with a rickety fence, and we got horses that, and they usually, their, their animals just get in our land, and our animals just get onto the land of chalk, trying to put, it's, I mean. What we're going to do about that situation, I, I can't afford, that's a lot.
Fence row to put up, I don't.
We can't afford that kind of money, and, uh.
The fence, well, the fence row would generally be, fence rows are generally required by the, by the subdivision, that they would, they would have to build a fence.
Yeah, I mean, okay, because. So, that far yellow line out there. Is where, uh, make sure, yeah, that's our property line down through. There, and there's horses behind that barn, I could show you, but, over there, and, uh, all the way through there, and it's just. Scarcity's had that much construction, and, and all, all the people. There, I don't know, if there's a. Some stuff, we, you know, type of issues. Sorry. But, uh, I just don't know what's, what's going to be done, about, you know, how you're going to make the drainage, and what's, there's got to be a fence there, because we have horses on their side and all that stuff, so, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't talk to Mike. But, uh, the Davis Lane, yeah, it goes up in curves, and you drive straight into our, our, no. Way up there. Up at the top. And you, and you see the gravel lane going down through there, past our barn and stuff. Yeah, right, yeah, right there. That's where Davis, yeah.
The gates, the gates of that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where we go in at, we can go in there on, in our farm too. We can go in through different spots, but we use that for, to get to the barn.
Mr. Chairman, if I might point out, this is not part of this application. Uh, what the city plans to do, or may be able to do with its right-of-way, such as it is, that's up to the city. That's not anything we can do anything about or make any decisions about. Uh, we're, we're here talking about the part in yellow, and that, and that's all we have jurisdiction over.
I understand. My point is, when, what's his name?
Matt, the guy that.
Yes.
Yes, Matt.
When Matt first pointed out, he, he drew his little marker all over everything, not just the part in yellow, on that one section where you had, it was in blue, and then he said it's, everything here is going to be rezoned, number one.
Well, we'll try to rein him in.
That, that was just me making a mistake with the laser pointer, they're only asking about the area.
Number two, uh, Mr. Stull said that if it gets, it's a zone, then he might make accommodations. What's this might stuff? Uh, Matt's asking for a more descriptive situation, instead of just saying, we think we're going to do this, this, and this. And I think he's right. Find out for sure what Mr. Stull's going to do with the land.
And then zone it.
Well, so, okay, let's zone it for him, and then he can do whatever the heck he wants to at that point.
No, he can't. No, you're not right.
Well, I've been wrong all my life, so my wife says. I don't see why it'd be any different. I'm sorry, go ahead.
We, we can zone it, but then they ha, and all he's asking for tonight is the zone, and then he has to bring back the plan of what he's going to do with it, uh, that we would have to vote on to approve.
And that has to meet our regulations. It's not just wide open for whatever he wants to do. It has to meet what we actually will allow in that zone.
Okay, somebody else also mentioned, I don't know who it was, that.
The subdivision would be responsible for a fence.
Is that correct? Am I going to be responsible? But, can we go back to one of the other, the one that actually shows the multi, uh, right there? Okay, on the, on the very right side, I'll let lie of houses that's going to go in there, so it's going to be like the little small lots. So, you're going to have them, ten houses in there, probably, what, twelve, ten or twelve there? Is there going to be a fence there, or?
The kids are going to build a.
That whoever lives there get, come to our land, or.
And, and, if they do get on our, our land, and they get hurt, because I'm liable.
Well, is that not correct?
Well, I'm not sure what the, what would the regulations be in the city versus in the, I know in the county, if that's, when it's adjoining agricultural land, you'd have to build a, a fence.
Well, I would think agricultural land, if it would be just like, you know, if, if the city, whatever development would put in, whoever was the developer would want to fence their property, and you know what I'm saying? I mean, I would think.
We have an existing fence right now, but it's, it's just, fences, farm fences aren't commensurate. Strang, yeah, I mean, you know, strand fencing, fencing, just, you know, square fencing, I mean, anybody, I can walk through that almost. And, uh, I just put a bunch of houses there and people there, is that going to be torn down and my animals get out?
Does it cause fence there?
Yeah, we got a fence there.
Then I think fence would have to go back.
Yeah, it would.
So, who's going to be responsible for doing that? It's what I'm at.
The developer would be required.
The developer. It's required in our landscape ordinance. As part of the development plan approval, you know, they would have to meet our fencing and, and buffering requirements. They may not show it now, I mean.
This, this is just.
Show it now, but not the detail of the fence.
This is just to get it rezoned at this point, they, there's not a, a detailed, uh, plan for this at, at this point. And I think it's both the mayor and Mr. Stull were saying that, you know, a lot of this, if they get, in, in order to get things started, they have, the first thing that has to happen is it has to be zoned, and, and then they can start looking for financing to make this happen, but.
So, once Mr. Stull gets it zoned, you bring back the plan, then we get to.
Bring back a much more detailed plan, yes.
Yes, sir, and you'll be notified.
Okay, thanks.
Are there other people from the audience that wanted to speak tonight? We got everybody? Um, any other questions from the commission?
Matt, it looks like to me that it's just, it's one of those vicious circles, uh, you're wanting to have some things done before, uh, the zone change, but the, Mr. Stull's needing the zone change in order to get those other things done. Is that a fair assessment there?
I, I think so, I think that is what it sounds like.
Yeah. And the city, city of Sadieville sounds enthusiastic about the possibility of the project.
Being on board with it, yeah.
Or some of the city of Sadieville does, I don't.
The mayor.
It's just.
I, I understand that. Um, what's the, what's the pleasure of commission, you want? I don't, I don't know how we should. Matt would recommend it. Yes, please come to the microphone.
This is Mr. Stull, and this gentleman here, I guess. When we, when we built there, um, we wanted to hook up to sewage, the sewer, we, we couldn't do that, cost us a bunch of money to, we had to dig a lagoon and all that stuff, we couldn't hook up to sewer. So, are they going to be able to get sewer, or is that, or are you going to?
If they're annexed, if they're annexed into the city, yes, they can.
Well, how come I couldn't?
Are you annexed in the city?
Part, part of our land is in the city, yes.
Is your house in the city?
I think it is, yeah.
Okay, then you need to come and talk with us.
Well, it's too late, I've already spent all that money on the lagoon now. Thank you.
Well, I, I talked to several people at the time. You weren't one of them, but I.
Yeah, you didn't talk to me.
So, if I talked to you, we'd, we'd have, we'd be hooked up to sewer.
Probably so, because we made every person who was in the city at that time, we got a grant to put in that sewer, okay, when I was there the last time. And every person that was in the city limits was to be hooked up to sewer at no cost of the constituent.
How many years? Okay. We've only been there a year or so.
Yeah.
Matt, do you feel like, uh, if we continued this for a month, would, do you think you've gained much as far as the, some details on this in a month's time? You still feel, feel like that needs to happen?
Um, I mean, I, I think we, we could get some, some more detail. Um, I mean, a lot of that just usually depends on, um, you know, what kind of, what kind of turnaround we get from, from the application.
I mean, I, I guess your concern is that this is being shown as a PUD, and, and you prefer to have a, a PUD more nailed down before you approve the, the zone change?
Yes.
Mr. Stull, do you feel like that you can work with him for, for a month, if we continue this until next month, or is that going to really throw a wrench in your, in your plans?
At, at this time of the year, you're probably talking about. That month costing a year of construction in Sadieville. Because by the time we get through a development plan and get it approved, and then get the mechanicals put into that property, we'll be out of this construction year. You know, we did this a month ago and, and tabled it for a month, and now we're tabling it again. And, uh, I, I think it's. It's either time for us to continue on a project, or it's time for us to just back out and find another project.
Charlie, you have an opinion on this, or?
Look, Mr. Lee, I'm right quick while I think about that.
Sorry, can I ask you, what was the decision you're making on this location you've chosen? I mean, it's kind of a bad spot, you know, bad roads to it, road's really narrow.
Well, it's twenty acres inside the city limits of Sadieville.
Okay.
And there's not five acres inside the city limits of Sadieville that can be developed.
Okay. Okay, I was just wondering, because we lived in town our lives, we moved way out to the country to get, to kind of get away from people, and then you're going to put a hundred houses over there? So, it kind of takes us by surprise somewhat, so I just want you to know, sorry, no bad feelings, but we have a lot of questions.
And I want to assure you, I'll work with you on any development attempt.
Yeah.
You know, if we get the development proper.
Right. I mean, when we're talking like fence, when we, on our idea of fence, we're talking like the ones you see like kind of behind neighborhoods on the interstate.
Well, six foot, I don't know what the requirement is, a lot of times it's six foot in between property like that. But i, if you look up there at the top, it might be a pretty good place to put a, put a, a, where you can go through up there on, on Payne Street instead of the, on your.
Yeah, but I don't want that, but I can see that top, that bottom right corner there, I can see it from my house, and I really don't want to see anything, to be honest with you, but.
That's not, that, that's not, all right. You want questions?
Thank you.
Back to you, Charlie, you get, you have an opinion on this?
Yeah, I was hoping you'd forget about that, uh, Mr. Stan. Obviously, the, the problem is, and, and staff is correct, or Matt's correct, we've always required fairly detailed kinds of plans to guide through, because the whole idea behind the PUD is you have some give and take to make it fit better the circumstance, fit the property, fit the community, whatever it might be. Uh, and if staff doesn't know going in what all those things are, or the developer doesn't have that nailed down, then, you know, a year or two from now comes back, and do we get what we think we got? Uh, does he get what he thinks he's got? That's, I mean, I certainly understand that. Uh, on the other hand, that, I mean, that's the way people said before, financing, you're not going to get it, because you may not get zoning, you may not get a lot of things, so, so that clearly is something they've got to have first. We don't usually get applications where the city is so anxious to be a part of it and, and assist. On the other hand, will they be able to fulfill all the dreams that they've got? Well, we don't know about that either. Once we've approved it, uh, they can develop. Now, then you get into, you know, some give and take, and some fight, and maybe even some litigation before it's over with, uh, because if, for example, the city can't do what it tries to do, or the state postpones a grant or something, uh, now, the, the Davis Lane part, I don't think that really affects us at all. But if they can't do the road widening, if Stull won't do any road widening, and we're stuck with a road that's twelve foot in some places, we're probably not going to approve much of a subdivision plot, because the, uh, infrastructure isn't there to support it. They're then going to say, then why'd you give us a zone change? Um, and, and that's, that's a good question. Uh, I don't think there's any question at all, however, that if we give that, that gives him the entitlement of getting up to what our two will allow. But at the same time, if the infrastructure's not there, uh, if they can't get easements to get to the treatment plant, you know, all this kind of stuff, if it can't all be put together in time for that subdivision plot to be approved, it's not, it's not going to be approved. Staff's not going to recommend that. We may end up, I said, getting sued over it. I can't imagine the court saying to us, once you make your zone change, then you've got to give them all that, you know, that, that can otherwise be served. Uh, now, what does all that mean as far as a recommendation goes? I really can't imagine it comes to that. Uh, but on the other hand, I know the city's been trying, and it's Georgetown that is, and it's whatever that is, northwest, wherever that place is, uh, you know, out by the, where Golden Corral used to be, across from Starbucks and all, we've been trying to get that work done, and that is the state's road, and they're the ones, you know, I mean, they're integral to it. How long have we been trying that? Um, so, it, it's a good question. Uh, the only thing I think that's different here, however, is you've got the city very very strongly behind it. And in their opinion, they need it. And we certainly want to, you know, be helpful to them. So, uh, it's one of those things where if we say yes, that may be a mistake as far as the complications down the road. If we say no, they may not get it. Uh, so I, I guess you got to figure which, which risk do we want to take? Uh, but frankly, I don't think staff's going to approve something that the roads can't support, that water and sewer can't support. Uh, and that just may be a fight we got to have, but that's the kind of fight we probably ought to be prepared to have. Uh, because we shouldn't approve anything, uh, if it simply can't be supported by the local infrastructure.
My question is, uh, what do we put first? The, is, the city can't go in and, and prove, improve Vine Street, widen it out to, what does it need to be, eighteen feet? Twenty feet?
City standard twenty-six, I don't know what the third. Twenty park, the penal, penal fire code, third. It's twenty feet.
Twenty.
With free pass third.
And that's travel portion free.
Two eight.
That's outside of parking, outside of curbs, outside of anything, any impediment.
Just the street for two, two-way, two-way traffic.
So if it doesn't even pass the fire code, then even if we were to try to approve a development plan down the road, it's not going to get a sign off from the fire department. So, um, they've got lots of things to accomplish, uh, even if we give this some change.
That's, that's what I'm. What I'm thinking is that you're talking about construction on this project, but there might be a few other things that need to happen before, before you even break ground on this. Make sure the city can get the street widened and, and make sure that the capacity is there from, uh, GMWSS to, to take on additional, the treatment capacity is available. Uh, have those questions already been asked, or have you talked to GMWSS?
Well, we've asked a lot of questions and there's a lot of open answers yet. There's a lot, a- as you say, there's a, there's a whole lot of fish to be fried yet.
Right.
And, uh, but this is for the first step and, and what was recommended by, uh, committee over there was to get a zone change first.
Mayor Wagner, you, you feel confident that, that the city has the, has the money and the willingness to widen that road?
Well, I can only speak for myself, because I'm just one of those, but I, and talking with the, uh, commission, and we have, uh, met with them a couple of times, and they've shared their, you know, their vision with the city commission. Everyone seems to be on board with it. Here, you know, the big, there is a one, there is a, there is a big safety factor within Vine Street. And that's one of the reasons why we were looking. We had anticipated it would make the changes to Vine Street. I know the gentleman said, well, I don't know how you can, can. Uh, a fact to move a house without tearing a house down. Well, I don't think that'd be the case, because if we take the sidewalk back and we move back six feet, I think we have plenty of room to make parking there. Now, you know, you can either have one of two things. You can fix the street and not let your house, not let your neighbor's house burn down, or you can let your neighbor's house burn down, and you all are aware that that occurred. So that's one of the reasons we're trying to fix it. So that, you know, that's why we've, we've started looking at it. Now, before this gentleman ever came to us with the concept, we realized we had to make a change with Vine Street. So, um, we had, we had other things that we looked at last year and we fixed. And so this year, one of the things we've looked at is Vine Street. We put in new rock walls down through Pike Street. If you've driven down there, you've seen those things. We've tried to make improvements along the way, as we've had funds to do so, so that's where we are.
You think it'd be wise to try to get some, uh, some estimates on what it might cost to, to make those improvements and?
Well, we're having a meeting with, um, Matt, what is it, the twenty-fourth? Uh, I think we're meeting the twenty-fourth of March, uh, with our engineers, with planning and zoning to look at some requirements or some things, some ways to look at it. And we had, we had virtually set this up prior to, to this. So it's kind of really funny how it's all come about all at one time, but it did. So, um, I, I can't say, yeah, are our engineers capable of giving us an estimate? Oh, yes.
I don't, I don't think any of us like, uh, to cause your, cause your financing to fall through or, or set you way back on your, uh, construction plans.
Well, now, my financing, it doesn't affect, it affects this gentleman.
It is, I know.
Yeah, I.
But I, I think we probably need to answer a few questions between now and next month, if, if they can be answered and, and get this thing nailed down a little tighter and, and does anybody, any commissioners agree or disagree with me, or do you think we ought to?
I have no problem, um, agreeing to the zone change because, uh, that, that's all that is, is, is the zone change. It's not any development plan. And, uh, so that there may be a possibility that they would, uh, be able to, to move forward and, and, uh.
But this, this PUD is associated with this zone change, is that correct?
It is, but, but it's not.
But it's, yeah, it's.
Set in stone either. Uh, he's still going to have to come back in and give preliminary development plans there with it.
All right.
So with that said, um, I will, uh, recommend that, um, ZMA twenty-twenty dash oh-three, a property at one fifty-one Vine Street, uh, in Sadieville, be approved for a, a zone change.
Mr. Smith, I made the motion to have a second.
Excuse me, and, and that would be adopting the recommendation of staff that says it complies with, uh, what is it, two thirteen sub one? Uh, that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
And that would also include, as Matt had said earlier, the, uh, six or seven conditions there?
That's correct.
Six.
That's six conditions.
Six conditions of approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second to Mr. Vest. We got a motion and a second to approve the zone change.
This would have to be a roll call, Mr. Chair.
It'd be a roll call vote. Is there any other discussion before we vote on this, or everybody ready to vote?
I, I think, uh, it, it's nice that Sadieville wants to add on and have more families and homes than one thing or another. But I really believe with the zone change, that the obstacles are still going to outweigh what will be done later. I just can't see that much being done down there, widening, raising malls, getting the, the walks, uh, right of ways, so on. Giving the fire truck room to go through. I just can't see all that coming, even if we change the zone.
Well, but, but that doesn't affect that. All we're doing is.
But it's, it's going to come later.
Yeah.
It's going to come later, and I understand that part, but seems like we might be putting a lot of headache on something, trying to get that done.
And if you're ready to vote, I, I, I think I can tell what James' vote is, but I don't.
Let's vote.
Count me, uh, yes.
Yes. What are you, James? You're no or yes?
Tempor- temporarily, I, I, I think there's too much to be done. I'll have to vote no.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Vest?
Yes.
Uh, Chair votes yes. If the city gets behind it and, and that, if you all can work out your differences on, I think it has some good potential there, so, if, I mean, what you're proposing. And it sounds like it would be be some groups of people that would be, be served by it as well, if, if you're looking to serve veterans and, single parent families. All right, so we're going. Maybe we're missing, we got them all, no? All right, well, that's.
It's, uh.
Motion passes. See, I, I didn't close the, uh, public hearing, did I?
Oh, no, no, no.
Close the public hearing at this point?
You signed the top one, and then the bottom copy is yours.
What does that bring us to?
Oh, well, all right, be careful, I, even I didn't do that one right.
This is a real one, I think. Michaela, before you get started, uh, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Wallen, we approved yours.
Very good.
Early on here.
That's yours. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Good luck to you.
You shouldn't have told them that.
Well, you can sit back down and enjoy the rest of it there.
I hate, I hate to turn something down like Sadieville, but I just, I think that obstacles will not let them do it.
I think it's a certain fact, per chance, that it never get built because of the roads and everything. But no reason not to let them do it, at least.
I understand that too. I, I really felt bad about saying no, too.
Yeah.
Hey, let's give them just, just a minute or so to get.
Hold it all in.
Get out the door. All right, I guess we're ready for FSP twenty-twenty dash oh-nine, the Varellis property.
Yep.
Kayla's got this one.
Um, so this. From apparent tract of forty-seven acres. It's located at two fifty-six Carrick Pike. Um, and A-one agricultural, all the surrounding properties are also zoned A-one agricultural. So this is just, uh, aerial view of the site here. So they're proposing to put the five acre tract right along here. I'll show the plot in a minute. Um, this is the existing home and existing entrance off Carrick Pike on the, on the project site there. And so then this is the, uh, proposed subdivision plot. So again, the existing structure is here with the existing entrance. They are proposing a new entrance off of Carrick Pike for the proposed five acre tract. Um, beyond that, the proposed five acre tract is meeting all of our requirements as far as minimum lot width at the building line, appropriate access, as well as setback requirements. So with that, staff has recommended approval of the application. I'm not sure if you guys have any questions for me, I can, it's all very standard conditions. I, uh, four there, I didn't add any, you know, special conditions for the site, so.
Any questions for Michaela? Commission? Oh, we got one from the audience.
If you could come up.
Come, come up.
Milton Adams. I guess I'm confused. Look at the flat.
Excuse me, were you sworn in? Was anybody sworn in tonight? Do you swear or affirm what you're about to say to be the truth, best information, and belief? Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm sorry, your name again?
Milton Adams.
Thank you.
Is this for one five acre plot, or is it for a fifty acre plot?
One, one five acre.
It's, the whole project site is forty-seven and a half acres. So they're proposing one five acre tract and then a remainder tract of forty-two and a half acres. So there'll be one forty-two acre tract and then one five acre tract.
Could the forty, could the large tract be, be made into a subdivision?
Um, not, not the way it's zoned. We have a minimum lot size. Of five acres in that agricultural district, so. Any further subdivision on this property would be required to come back before the planning commission, but as far as, you know, a large residential subdivision, no, they would have to go through a rezoning process to go to A-five, which is our. As is right now, for this application, all they would be required to do is the one five acre tract that would allow one additional plot on the property.
Okay. No, no concern about one five acre plot, but if it's something other than that, yes, we would have a concern. Okay?
All right. Thank you for that. Is the applicant here or wish to speak?
Oh, well, I'm here. Mr. Varellis is actually here.
All right. I didn't know.
Yeah, I think, uh, I feel certain that she's in agreement with the, with the conditions.
With the conditions?
Usual border flag.
Are there other people from the audience that, that want to have questions?
I'd like to say something if I can, because I'm under three, two, four Carrick Pike.
Uh, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Kurt Farnham. Uh, Mr. Cristani and I own, uh, the property adjacent to the track at three, two, four Carrick Pike. Um, we're against this. Uh, we moved to Georgetown specifically Carrick Pike for farmland. And if we continue to allow subdivisions, it will destroy the character of the area. That's one five track land, but if this is allowed, you could divide that whole thing five, 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 five. Uh, there are already two subdivisions, one south of Carrick Pike. More homes going up all the time. And another around the corner from us, um, off of Stone Road, it's a two-minute drive from our property. Uh, developments continue to spring up in other parts of Georgetown, and we'd like to keep Carrick Pike rural. That's why we moved there. Regarding traffic, uh, Carrick Pike is a notoriously dangerous road. Um, it's very narrow, additional homes mean addition, more traffic, making a dangerous road all the more so. And finally, um, this is going to be a horse farm. And we will have a barn which will be located at the top of the ridge of this property. Uh, it will be fifty feet from the property line as required by law. For this reason, the applicant might want to consider selling another part of the property that isn't adjacent to our farm. I don't think anybody would want to build a house that's downwind of a horse barn. Um, that's it.
Any questions?
Will your barn be located?
Our barn will be, that's our house right there. And if you go, I don't know how many, we heard. Well, it could be halfway up, exactly. It, it's basically the way, the, the way this, the property is, that they want to subdivide. If you build your house at the top of the, the ridge of that property. Uh, yeah, so that's at the top of the ridge. Now, if you sell that five acre property and they build their house at the top of the ridge, which most people do, you're going to be right, if they, and if they go fifty feet from their property line, they're going to be a hundred feet away from that horse barn. I, I don't know how they're going to sell that, knowing that information. I, I wouldn't want to have a house that's that close to, uh, uh, functioning horse barn.
I got a couple of questions. How many years has your farm been in your family?
Um, we have been there, we're New York transplants. Um, we came down from New York to, like another gentleman was saying, to kind of get away from the crowds. Um, the thought of a house going up there is distressing to us, because again, I think it's like a tipping point. You do one, and then the whole thing becomes subdivided. You know, it's a beautiful stretch of farmland back there, and I think if we keep doing this and adding all of these houses, you're ruining the character of, of the area. It has not been in our family for a long time, but it's very much in our hearts. And we spent a lot of time and a lot of money, if you look at that house, you can't see it from the schematic. We made a real concerted effort to make it, you can't see it from the road. It's really, you know, organic at slopes down. We didn't want it at the top of the ridge because we wanted privacy. And so we had to do a lot of, um, additional building to prop the house up. So it was just distressing to us to hear that there was going to be somebody right on top of us. And again, just as a consideration, if there's a barn there, I don't know who's going to want to be that close to a barn. This is farm country. It's not meant to be all these little subdivided five acre properties with houses on them.
My other question is, how, how, how long has the Varellis farm been in the family?
Um, since the, uh, since the eighties, maybe even the late seventies.
Late seventies?
We bought our first, like the original farm is from, uh, nineteen forty, since the original farm. And this is adjacent to that.
Not, not that it made any difference, for as I'm concerned, or whatever, but, uh, you know, you get people move in, it comes in, and they do want the outside open space, this, that, and the other. But then there's also people that's your neighbors, that's been there maybe for two or three generations. And neither here nor there, but that kind of enters my mind is to, what kind of things you may want or expand to and so on. And, and it's, it's noteworthy to know.
Is your property the one where they put up all the new trees?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wondered.
Other questions from commission? Are there other people in the audience that, that want to speak, or have we covered everybody? Got them all?
If I might say one thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Uh, to the objection, because it changes character and whatnot, local ordinance permits this in the A-one zone, period. Uh, either five acre tracts or clusters. Um, so understanding what you're saying, uh, and I ride my bike out that road a lot. Uh, I've been by the Varellis property thousands of times. Uh, but ordinance allows it, and it's not a matter of whether we want or don't want the character to change. The ordinance allows it, so I mean, that's, and well, which is why staff said it complies with all our regulations, so.
Yeah, I understand that. That's also why I brought up about the barn, again, for the Varellis family, to also take that into consideration. I don't know how easy it's going to be for them to sell that property, but the, they're going to be on top of a horse barn. I don't know how easy it's gonna be for them to sell that property, but they're gonna be on top of a horse barn, but.
Any other questions?
Usually when someone comes to us wanting to, uh, excuse, uh, divide five acres off of a piece of property, it's because they've already got it sold or dealing it to a family member or something, so, uh, I mean, is that the case here? Do you have someone that's gonna build on it, or you just anticip- Okay, so you're just wanting to sell off that five, five acre piece of property?
Yeah, just, we, we sold the twenty acres to Mr. Cristani, that he's the owner of the property. We sold that back in two thousand sixteen. This is an adjacent lot that we've been-
Okay. So, you bought your property from the Varellis?
That is correct.
I think our primary concern is, is that, is this gonna continue to happen around, you know, the beauty of the cattle farm and the Varellis's farm? Is this every couple of years, a segment of five, ten, this or that, you know, essentially then we'll be in the middle of a development? You know, whether it's three acre lots, five acre lots, is this something that's going to continue to happen?
Well, like Mr. Perkins said, it's, it, it could, but it would be a minimal of five acre lots there, but, uh, because it, the way it is owned, um, it's, it's possible. You could sell, um, how many acres do you have? So, you could sell five acres off of it legally.
And you also have the option to buy that five acres, I guess, if they want to put it up for sale.
Watch out, there's gonna be a horse barn right next to it.
And they'll let the bar works come in and the water throw, and your horses will freak out, and that would be a problem with that.
Yep, okay. Alright, I think, I guess we've, we've covered everything. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up? I understand your, your concern, but I'm pretty sure that, uh, we'd be setting ourselves up for a lawsuit if, uh, that's just part of private property rights, if you, you can, as our ordinances and a, a comprehensive plan spells out, everybody has the, the option to sell five acre tracts.
I'd like to say something. Just like what you're all talking about, the little lots going up on Carrick Pike. I grew up next to the Varellis's all my life, when all that was cattle farms. And Carrick Pike is rent when the guy that we lived on sold that. She knows what I'm talking about.
Hey, Robert?
When Robert Wallace sold that farm, we was on. It's nothing but houses now. Then where Mr. Lawrence Smith farmed, sold off and lots, so Carrick Pike is nothing.
Like it used to-
Not even a fraction as good as it used to be back in the day. I know it doesn't affect your situation, but kind of answers your question. It probably will continue.
I was surprised when Robert did that too.
How does it continue with that? Is that the state road, or is that the-
Well, it's just where everybody wants to be. It's a great place, good pla- I, I mean, I grew up there.
Cause that road is, I mean, the first day I was there, and we started to put, you know, uh, trees and stuff in or whatever, the neighbor across the street said, "You do know this is called Death Road?" And I said, "Uh, for what?" And, but the amount of people and accidents and stuff on that road, so I'm curious of that road.
Evidently, they didn't live there like we did.
We better move on for the sake of time here.
Yeah.
We ready for a motion? Anybody willing to make one?
Yeah, I'd say that we accept file number FSP 2020-09, uh, to be accepted as-
With the-
Wouldn't many variants is on it, I don't think, but it was everything was-
Four conditions?
Four conditions of approval.
Alright.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Stone, second by Mr. Best. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Uh, for somebody to meet-
I need somebody to sign.
Meet up here, we'll get some good signature. That brings us to budget?
Other items, yes. Yeah. Budget, um, under other items, the next item is approval of the twenty fiscal year, twenty twenty-one budget. I presented this at workshop, and I made one change from workshop. It's, we changed the proposed, um, raises from fifty cents to three percent, and which is what the city is gonna be, uh, looking to do with city employees. Uh, if that changes in the future-
Yes.
You know, when we present the budget, once we get it approved, we have to take it to the county for approval, then we'll take it to the city. If they amend and don't give three percent, they may cut ours, but at least we'll go there with, with the three percent in our budget. The only other changes are an increase in benefits, cost of benefits, um, retirement and healthcare, which I went over at workshop, and a decrease in, in anticipated revenues from development fees. So, we're, we're estimating that those will go down fifty thousand. So, a combination of the increase in salaries and benefits, and a decrease in, um, projected revenues mean that there's a, um, an increase in the request from the city and county, which will fit, um, split fifty-fifty our budget. So, overall, the, the increase in the request will be from five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six sixty-eight from, for last, from last year to five hundred seventy-four, nine forty-three is, is the request from city and county, which is four, forty-seven thousand, two hundred seventy-five each increase. A total of nine, ninety-four thousand, five fifty is the increased total from city and county. So, that's, um, an increase in, in our requested, um, budget for city and county, which, um, hopefully they won't have any major issues with, but it's really just the, just the re, the decreased revenues that we anticipate, and the, the slight increase in salaries that's driving that increased request. There are a few other things in there. We, we're asking fifty thousand for our GIS flight, which we do that every five years. We're trying to get us, get a, um, a pot of money, um, built up over time, so we're gonna budget that over five years, so that we'll have the money to do that when it comes time to fly the county again. And, um, that's, that's an aerial flight to get new GIS data.
Very expensive.
Yeah, that's very expensive, but we just did it last year, so we'll have to do that again in five years. So, we put that in our budget, and we'll do that for the next five years. We've increased our IT, um, um, line item from twenty thousand to forty thousand. That's just because of the increased cost for IT, um, just our servers in the basement. We have to up, upgrade the software and the, the cost of that, and the, um, net gain, which provides our, our IT support. Those, those costs are continually going up, and that forty thousand is projected based on the actual cost this year. So, we're just carrying actual cost forward to next year. Um, and then we put ten thousand in there for, um, repairs to the building. There's some exterior repair that needs to be done. The soffits, um, need to be rebuilt and repainted. So, there's just a little bit in there for that. So, the aerial flight, the IT, and the, the building repairs are also additional items in this year's budget, but those are kind of canceled out by the, the last, last year's aerial flight overrun that we put in last year's budget, so that, those kind of cancel out each other. So, really, they don't affect the, our budget ask this time. It's really driven by the decrease in revenues and salaries and benefits.
Any questions for Joe on the budget?
You talked about the revenues. Do you anticipate- Are folks in the basement there moving out, or anybody moving in, or?
Well, if they do move out, it's gonna be later in the year.
Okay.
I think they're still negotiating.
I think it's probably gonna be more expensive to move than they originally anticipated, so I'm hoping they don't move, but if they do, it'll be a little bit later in the year. And that's only twelve thou- it's a thousand a month if they rent for the basement.
So, if we do lose that, it's not the, it's not the biggest deal. I think we could probably get somebody else in there, some other government office. Or Ben will build an apartment down there.
Any other questions for Joe, or somebody wanna make a, make a motion to approve his twenty twenty-one draft budget?
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty budget.
Twenty, twenty, and twenty-one?
I'll second the motion.
Mr. Best, second by Mr. Mifflin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, motion pass. That brings us to, uh, election of officers.
Yeah, we do this every March. We need to elect a chair, a vice chair, and three members of the executive committee. Or, I don't know, you talked about doing, post, just postponing this a month and doing it next month, or, you know, we can do it next. I don't-
Mark expressed he, he would like to continue as chair. I don't know if anybody else wants to run for chair.
That's fine, but I, I think-
Just open it up?
But I think we need to-
Nominations?
Well, with, with him not being here, uh, and-
You think we should wait until next?
I think we ought to wait, yeah.
Is there any reason we have to do it this month, or?
No, I don't think Charlie said that, as long as-
Now, this is the scheduled month. This is, the term is up this month, but you actually serve in your offices until you're replaced. So, if it's next month or six months, it doesn't matter, Mark continues.
I think it would be better anyhow. We only, we only got five members here. It'd be nice to have seven or eight.
Yeah, and we've done this with boards before, where we've waited a month if we were a little shy.
And so is Frank no longer on the board?
Frank is off the board. They're, they'll probably appoint somebody this month. I know it's on the agenda for tomorrow, but I'm not sure if they'll appoint somebody tomorrow. So, probably, they have got, they have another meeting before we meet again, so they'll probably have somebody for next month.
And what about Byron?
Byron is still technically on the planning commission. I haven't, we can't get hold of him. We haven't seen him in two months now.
Has anybody seen Byron?
When, is, is his time up?
No, his time is up in two years, so he's got two years left.
My time's getting pretty soon, so.
Well.
I'm on the board.
You know, I, I just going through some desk and clean that stuff. I had the letter from George Lesby, and it said, "I was appointed until May the thirtieth of this year."
That's your first term, so you have another term.
Yeah, you're probably stuck with us for another four, so. Don't make any plans anytime soon.
I don't mind. I just, uh, but.
He, he finished out.
Okay.
Yeah, John Cannon, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh, we got you for two more four-year terms. You just, you better relax.
I'll do my best.
I didn't have anything else other than the election of officers.
Uh, is anything, if anything happened with old projects, anything interesting? You haven't worked on the thing squared away down at Stanford Ground? I don't know what's happened down there with the little subdivision, the sidewalks, or they done anything on them?
Lid on something?
A lid, yeah. You got a lid on the ground.
A lid?
A lid.
Roads are paved, there's sidewalks, a lot of the long streets down, and we're pretty much out of money, so.
Done all they could do.
Sounds like farming.
All that left, not, couldn't get more than fifty feet of sidewalk in the last night, so.
Alright.
Yeah, I think that's up to the previous party or homeowners or whoever now, put in sidewalks and rest of that.
Did you, did you get any more, uh?
I kind of quit on the development phase two, but-
No, I, I was thinking about the other one over here that was involving, uh, Bob Sims.
Lane Drud?
Yeah.
We got an application that'll probably be in next month.
Yeah.
We should, talked about that. Executive committee, what in there?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll have to, um, we talked about that at workshop.
At work, yeah.
Yeah, we have an application in. We're gonna hear it. We're gonna, we took it through TRC already.
What is, I don't remember the status. I'm trying to make improvements on them.
It's a zone change application.
It's kind of like the, even though we really shouldn't be talking about it, but unlike the Sadieville one, if they don't have a road where it ought to be a road, they really don't need to get a zone change. Of course, I didn't say that, and nobody's gonna repeat that, so.
Yeah, I kind of feel sorry about it.
Really? Yeah, break the hammer down before we get in trouble.
We're adjourned.